Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting and tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting. The City Council meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowery?
Here.
Bruno?
Bruno, here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kassarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx? Mayor? Pashki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our City Council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would kindly ask our Building Commissioner, Mr. Brian Byrne, to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We jump right to item number four, folks. Item four is amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Seeing none. Item five is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. Those items can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Motion by Pashki, seconded by Kassarag. Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
All right, Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, the Omnibus Agenda has been approved by this council. Item number eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
The bills total $3,144,001.14.
Mayor Bruno moves that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found at tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
Alderperson Bruno from an undisclosed location, there's apparently nine of him, has made the motion to approve the bills as read, which are available in the City Council packets and available on the city's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bowery. Any questions, any comments? There was just one earlier today regarding an item. City clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, the bills have been approved for payment. We jump to number 10, Presentation of Ordinances and Resolutions. Item 10A is to consider ordinance number 2024-16, granting a variation to reduce the street yard setback from 20 feet to 15.16 feet for a proposed front porch at 130 South Harrison. Is there a motion? Motion by Swanson, seconded by Pashki. Ms. Dawkins?
So, the owners of the subject property are proposing to convert their existing front stoop into a covered porch that would extend five feet from the front of the house towards the street. The applicant is requesting the conversion to help improve the safety of the home's primary entrance and to reduce the possibility of hazardous conditions caused by inclement weather. The family has elderly members with mobility issues who would benefit from a protected entryway, and the front entrance is in need of repairs due to rotting. Per the zoning ordinance in the R2 zoning district, the required street setback is 20 feet. The front wall of the home is set back 20.16 feet from the front property line. The subject property requires a variation to reduce the street setback to 15.16 feet to allow for the proposed porch. The Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of the requested variation, and with us this evening, I believe, are the applicants and City Planner Busing if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dawkins. Any questions from the dais for either Mr. Busing and/or our guests, the applicants this evening? Seeing none, sensing none, a simple majority is in order to pass this request. With that, City Clerk Kellick will take the roll.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
And with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, ordinance number 2024-16 has been approved by this council. Thank you. Item B, Consider Resolution 2024-45, authorizing a waiver of the bidding process and execution of a contractor's agreement with First Inspection Services Incorporated for plumbing plan review and inspection services. Is there a motion? Bowery makes the motion, seconded by Pashki. Ms. Dawkins?
So, the city is required by state law to provide professional review and inspection services for all new and/or modified plumbing systems within the corporate limits. Since 2013, the city has worked alongside First Inspection Services, Inc. in providing residential, commercial, and industrial plumbing inspections. For the council's consideration this evening is a request for a new contract with First Inspection Services for the 2025 and 2026 fiscal years. It is our belief that the consistency of service will benefit all as we work together to protect the health and safety of our community. First Inspection Services has only increased their fees once in the 11 years that they have been working with the city. The current contract would include some adjustments to the fees scheduled to compensate for increased and overhead costs and inflation since the last increase. That was six years ago. All costs associated with the plumbing inspections and plan review fees are passed on to the permit applicant. With us this evening, we do have our Building Commissioner, as you gave our pledge earlier, Brian Byrne, who can answer any additional questions you might have.
Questions for the dais or from the dais for the Commissioner? Alderperson Kassarag?
Hi, Brian.
Good evening.
I guess I'm pretty skeptical of this. I guess I don't understand why we would skip the bidding process even if the eye is to keep the consistency of service. I'm not sure what the benefit of not going out for quotes is here.
You know, I think, you know, as it was stated earlier, looking at the continuity of service, I know that's, you know, your big question in the consistency of service. I also look at the overall experience that they bring to the table and what they actually have with the knowledge that is it related to the plumbing code in addition to doing the plan reviews, and they're also looking at a future service expansion. So, we've rarely ever had any conflicts with inspection scheduling, anything like that. But to go back to your question, currently, we have continuity of service is extremely important right now. We have a big job going on on the east side that we started about a year ago, and we're midstream with that process. And that process is, you know, we've probably done 40 to 50 inspections there already involving plumbing. So, that's one example of the continuity in service that is important for us here in the city and the Building Department, along with the experience they bring and knowledge that. It's not that we didn't consider that this should be something that should be bid, but currently, in my opinion, it was something that was very important is that continuity of service.
I guess I just don't understand what the bidding process necessarily relates to the to the continuity of service. I mean, I certainly understand that. I, the only times I think, or multiple times, I think I have voted to not go out for bids, but those have always been when there's like no players in the field kind of thing for public works. Are there other people who provide these services?
There are folks that would provide the services. I'm not sure if they would bid on this type of work. Like I, you know, said before, I think, you know, the importance of this is that they have a relationship with a lot of the contractors that we deal with. They know the plumbing code inside and out, backwards and forwards. They know the little idiosyncrasies that are associated with Geneva and especially the downtown aspect of that as well. So, with all that being tied together and what we have going on right now, I thought it was very important that we continue that service. We haven't had any negative or delays when it comes to plan reviews, inspections, and I thought that was important to look at.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say, you know, if there was no increase in costs, I might be more apt to agree to not going out for bids, but since they are increasing the costs and all these costs are being passed on to the taxpayer, I think it's just a responsible thing to do to make sure that the cost that we're asking our taxpayers to pay for is in line. And without the bidding process, I have no idea. So, I guess that lets you know where I stand on it. And I'm not hearing any unique reason here other than, I mean, what you said is important for sure, but I think in this case, I just am not getting the full reason to do it. So, I appreciate it.
Understood.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Are you going to talk about unfunded? No, it's fine. Anyone else? Yes, Alderperson Ruby.
Thank you. So, you talked about how well they know the codes, et cetera. Isn't it, I would assume that all the plumbers would know all the codes?
Well, I think, you know, if you look at it from that standpoint, most plumbers, yes, they do know the code and the areas that they work. Okay, and then if you take that a little step further, a plumber may specialize in residential work. A plumber may specialize in commercial work. These folks know everything from simple residential kitchen remodel or bathroom remodel to highly involved commercial remodels like we have going on right now at, you know, General Mills and other places in the industrial park.
Do you feel that is unique in the industry to have that knowledge?
Well, I think it is amongst plumbers. I don't necessarily think it's unique on somebody that may provide inspection services, but from what I've seen, there are specialties. It's rare that you have somebody that has the experience on all spectrums of the code.
Okay. And when, when is the renewal of this contract? I mean,
It'd be two years from now, 2026.
Okay, so what month does it expire?
The current contract expires this month.
This month, okay. So, we should have already put it out to bid then or not? Is this still the right timeframe?
Well, it would have gone, we would have put it out to bid if we felt it was needed.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Alderperson Maladra?
Brian, just to understand a little bit more about the continuity of service. For example, the project you mentioned that's been going on for a long time is halfway done. We've done 50 inspections, et cetera, et cetera. If we brought somebody new on, what would happen in that project?
Well, I think what would happen, we'd have a learning curve that would have to be understood with whoever that person was that was taking it over to find out exactly where we're at, to get a good handle on that project, which could be time consuming. And I can't put a timeframe on that. It could be weeks. It could be months.
Okay, would they look at any of the past inspections and maybe try to redo something?
Well, I think what, you know, if it was, in my opinion, they would take all the inspection reports that have been done, review it, talk to the contractors that are on site, and just develop a rapport and see where we're at with the whole project throughout that timeline.
Okay. And I guess my last question is, every time a contract like this expires, don't we have something going on that would be disrupted if we changed? Isn't that sort of like?
Yeah, I mean, there would be projects that are ongoing that would be midstream, yes.
Okay, so would you say that we have to keep working with the same contractor all the time because of that or?
No, I'm not saying that. I think it is something that should be evaluated, and we did evaluate it. And we felt based on the service that we're getting, the knowledge, and everything that is provided, we felt comfortable with.
Yeah, I think, I think some of what maybe is missing here is that, is that insight, is the fact that you didn't just look at this in a vacuum for one project or many. You looked at this in the context of what would probably be charged elsewhere, the kind of experience you'd probably get elsewhere, et cetera, et cetera. But we don't get to see that that process took place. So, I'm okay with supporting it this time, but I do think that in the future, we need to see the kind of rationale that goes into this. There are times when I feel the continuity is critical. I used to do software development, and if we could, coders, no big deal, but architects, we tried to keep working with the people who understood our systems and what they were doing. So, I can see that value. In this context, I kind of look at it the same way Becky does. The plumbing code is the plumbing code. What adds value is our systems and things like that. And so, people who understand our systems add value. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Ms. Dawkins, you wanted to add some flavor?
So, I just, just two things I wanted to point out. One, and it was mentioned in the staff report, but again, this was an unfunded state mandate that came about in 2013, require us to have a plumbing inspector. Secondly, I think, which is a bigger concern, not only with consistency, is you may recall, and we've done programs for lead line replacement, and as that due date comes closer for all of the lead lines to be replaced, plumbing services are going to be scarce, and there's not even enough plumbers that are licensed right now to do the city of Chicago, much less the state of Illinois. And I believe that in order to keep our consistency and to keep a plumber at a good rate that we know that we have a relationship with would be in the city's best interest so that we don't get into this trick bag when everybody is trying to get plumbers because you are required to have plumbers inspect even the city's work when it comes to some of those replacements. So, just a little more flavor to add to the conversation.
With that, I trust we're prepared to vote. Alderperson Ruby?
Just a thought, a question. Is there any interest in amending this contract renewal, which I don't know if the plumbers would even be agreeable to this, but for a shorter duration and then putting it out to bid? Say, six months to a year as opposed to the two years? Just food for thought.
Stephanie, what do we do if it expires in a month and?
Well, then we would, I'd have to look at the agreement. I don't know that it has a month-to-month, but we would hopefully enter into some agreement month-to-month until such time. Otherwise, we have to hire somebody. So, again. I mean, I think if you're looking to shorten the contract, the appropriate method would be to offer an amendment to approve the contract for a year as opposed to as presented.
Okay, thank you.
There is no motion on the table. We'll take the vote on the original motion. Alderperson Kilburg?
I move that we amend the contract to one year.
There's a motion on the floor to amend the contract to one year. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kassarag. To vote on the amendment, ladies and gentlemen, Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Nay.
Marx?
Nay.
Pashki?
Nay.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bowery?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay. Bruno, nay.
Ruby?
Aye.
The motion to amend the contract to a one-year period fails with three affirmative votes, six nay votes. The main motion's back on the table. That is for the two-year contract as explained by our Building Commissioner, Mr. Byrne. Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Kassarag?
Kassarag, aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
I'm so sorry. Pashki?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, item 10B has been approved by this council. We jump to item 11, folks, public comment. If there's anyone joining us tonight here in the chamber who wishes to address the council, now's your chance to do so. This is the opportunity for the council to listen, you to speak, us to digest. With that, Mr. Simon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Simon. I'm here as a representative of the Geneva Chamber along with my friend Neil Johnson. I'm the operator of The Little Traveler at 404 South Third Street. Neil is the owner of SVN Landmark, SVN Landmark Realty. Commercial Realty, yes. And we just want to let you know about the next two items that are going to be on the Geneva Chamber's agenda so you can be telling your constituents, your neighbors, and the people at home can know as well. This weekend, on Saturday, is the Coffee Crawl, an annual event. Over 200 people are already signed up. More than 75% of those people are coming from outside Geneva. There are 22 stores and restaurants that are participating, many of whom have nothing to do with coffee, so they have unusual samplings, like Grow the Plant Store is sampling potted plant summer sip, and Mia's Wish Body Care is sampling lavender vanilla latte. Tickets are still available. The next weekend, April 26th and 27th, is the Citywide Garage Sale. Over 100 Geneva residents are participating in that, and signups are still available. The Chamber is coordinating all the advertising and publicity for that and all the marketing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, we'll jump to new business from the dais. Anyone, any information? Alderperson Kilburg?
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to recognize Fermilab, who is a major economic contributor to the Fox Valley. Recent study shows spending by the laboratory to be a major contributor to the state's prosperity as well as here in the Fox Valley. Investments in scientific research and spending on operations added nearly $1.3 billion to the state's economic output in 2022, and increased total household income in Illinois by about $530 million. For your information, Fermilab employs about 5,000 people here in the Fox Valley primarily with close to 2,000 employees and over 3,000 subcontractors that have meaningful work at the lab. So, again, a major force in the Fox Valley's economy and one that I'm sure all three cities, St. Charles, Geneva, and Batavia, all appreciate.
Well said. Anyone else? A motion to adjourn will be in order. Is there such a motion? The voice was rather weak over there, so we're going to give that to Kassarag. All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll take just a moment to switch over to the Committee of the Whole Meeting. The microphones are off. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen in the audience and those tuning in, Alderperson Mayor is unable to make it this evening. She texted earlier, asked that I chair the Committee of the Whole Meeting. I am proud to do so. I proudly call this Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. Let the record show that we have all the Alderpersons present save for Alderperson Mayor. Item two is to approve the Committee of the Whole Minutes from April 1, 2024. Is there a motion? Motion by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Kassarag. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Item two passes. Items of business include item 3A, Consider Draft Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Proposed, excuse me, Proposal with Baxter and Woodman for the Fiscal Year 25 Bike Plan Classification Study in an amount not to exceed $32,700. Is there a motion to put this on the floor? Bowery makes the motion, seconded by Pashki. Ms. Dawkins?
All right, so the Fiscal Year 25 budget provided funding within the Capital Projects Fund to develop recommendations to enhance Geneva's bicycle infrastructure along certain prescribed routes. Consulting engineer Baxter and Woodman has prepared the attached proposal, which was in the packet, that includes review sections of South Street, South Seventh Street, Western Avenue, Dodson Road, Campbell Street, Franklin Street, and South Third Street to the Fox River Trail, as well as connectivity of routes to schools. These routes were identified by SPAC in the joint meeting of SPAC and City Council on October 10, 2022. Baxter and Woodman have performed engineering consulting services for the city for a variety of different projects, and staff is confident in their ability to provide this set of recommendations. If you have additional questions, we have City Engineer Brian Davids with us this evening, who also helps as a liaison with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, so.
Questions from the dais for Mr. Davids? Alderperson Pashki?
So, I asked the question earlier about whether grant funds were sought through the Safe Routes to School funding program. That's federal funds that are available for things like this, and I recognize that it was too late for this specific portion of the project. I'm wondering if there will be consideration in applying for grant funds for any implementation of a plan. I know there are a lot of environmental grants and Department of Transportation grants. A lot of funds are available for this type of work, so I'm just curious if there will be a process to look into that.
Brian gets to do the fun stuff. I get to do all the pushing. Actually, City Engineer Davids is currently pursuing a federal grant for bike plan implementations. We are setting the table for future Safe Routes to School with this. Most grants now require at least preliminary engineering to qualify or get the maximum amount of points. That's what this is going to be doing. We are also currently pursuing ITEP grants. There's a call for project this August, which we are pursuing for some of these projects. And then City Administrator Dawkins informed me last week of a state Illinois grant for bike plan implementation, so we are pursuing multiple sources for this funding.
Awesome, thank you.
My pleasure.
The executive summary shows Dodson Road. I believe it's still a street.
We can fix that for the record.
Thank you. Maybe we're changing the speed limit.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderperson Kassarag?
I had a question about the scope of the work, so probably more for you. And I mean this with all due respect to City Planning Advisory Commission, but they identified certain streets. And I was just wondering if the scope can say, well, maybe this isn't the best street. Maybe you should consider alternate streets, or is that already in there? It just seems so specific with the routes that I was a little surprised that we wouldn't ask an engineering firm to help us with that.
Sure. So, you're right. The routes are pretty specific. Really, we're trying to meet the goal that was presented to us. Please evaluate these specific items, and so we're valuing those specific items. That said, yes, we're totally up for if Baxter and Woodman is approved and they identify, maybe Dodson is not the best street in the area to make that conveyance. I think they would feel comfortable telling us that that's not the best option in that area, and that would be the recommendation is not to use that street. I mean, they have safety high in mind there.
So, I guess my question like in that hypothetical was, would they say you should use this street instead?
I imagine they would, yes.
Okay.
I expect they would, I should say, yeah.
It just seemed like that, that part of the scope, it just surprised me, and so, I don't know if that's written in there. I didn't see it. It was just the streets listed, so I just want to make sure. Maybe I'm saying, hey, Dodson's bad. End of story.
Yeah, I, I think, again, we're, we kept it to a specific list of streets because that's what we were asked to do, and also that keeps the scope narrow for this specific project, which as rich noted, is kind of the first, we see this as the first step of several to, you know, getting a more comprehensive bike plan.
All right. I just want to say thank you. This has been a major priority of mine to keep this moving and keep this moving forward. So, I think this is a huge success for the city of Geneva to get to this point. I'm glad you guys are already doing all this advance work on funding and where the next steps are going to go. And of course, appreciation of SPAC for the work they did on it. Thank you.
Alderperson Kilburg?
I had one question, and maybe you're not at a point where you can answer it, but with these, it, but with these, uh, these bike routes, will that affect or impact parking on, on the, on the side of the street wherever the, the path is, uh, facilitated?
Yeah, I don't think we can answer that quite yet. I mean, I think that based on the, uh, recommendations that Baxter and Woodman gives us.
I would assume that that's probably a possibility because if you look at some of the existing bike paths, uh, or routes, uh, in the city, I think that they don't allow for parking on that side.
Sure. There's, there's a lot of, uh, different options for, um, bike routes. Not all of them are necessarily a linear path with the markings as, as we're familiar with. Something like, you know, Bent Tree is a really good example of one in the city. Um, those are certainly an option, and I think they're an excellent option, but sometimes it is appropriate to have something more like what you call the sharos, which is the arrows and like the share of the road, um, mentality along a roadway, and that would retain the parking. Um, so I think we're just going to have to see what Baxter and Woodman comes up with and, uh, again, assuming that they are approved here, um, and, uh, and look at those a little more thoroughly. Obviously, if there's any loss of parking, it's not something we're going to take lightly. We know that that's available to residents and, you know, we're not just going to make that decision unilaterally, unilaterally.
That's the thing. I think as you, as you progress with this, I think the resistance or pushback would come if in fact it would impact parking on, on that side of the street, whichever side it might be on. But, uh, these are all wider streets and, uh, and, uh, certainly can facilitate it. It's, uh, what the ramifications of it might be, so.
Yep.
I'll look forward to, uh, the plan and, uh, its implementation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? This is item three A, folks. We have a motion by Bowery, a second by Pashke. Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Malandra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
For the fiscal year twenty-five bike plan classification study with Baxter and Woodman, we have nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. The motion has passed. Item three B is to consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a license agreement with MISU Incorporated for the, for two zero seven James Street. Is there a motion?
Some.
Bowery makes the motion, Kassarag makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So the commercial property located at two oh seven James Street is undergoing renovation. The property was formerly an outbuilding for two ten West Street, which is previously home to the Geneva Design House, also known as Strawflower Shop. In 2023, two ten West State was sold and the Haas family retained ownership of the outbuilding to continue the Geneva Design House operation. Construction to transform the building for its updated use is underway, and as the work has progressed, the owner has identified a need to extend onto public property, which is the James Street parking lot, in order to create a code compliant threshold and stoop to provide ingress and egress to the existing building. Approval of the license agreement will allow for the completion of retrofitting of the building and will facilitate the retention of a longstanding successful business in a smaller footprint. The license agreement for your consideration was prepared by the city attorney and has been used in similar situations. The license provides for insurance coverage to the city as well as providing clarification for maintenance responsibility of the structures within the city property. Um, with us this evening, we do have our economic development director, Kathleen Timoshenko, who's happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Questions on the dais for Director Timoshenko. Seeing none? Sensing none? Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Malandra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item three B has been approved by this committee with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We jump to item four, public comment. Anyone joining us this evening wishes to address the council in any matter? Now is your time to do so. New business from the dais yet again. Very well. Yep. We are going to now entertain a motion from whoever so desires to head into closed session on collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employee or their representatives per five Illinois compiled statutes one twenty dash two dash C dash two and purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body per five Illinois compiled statutes one twenty slash two C five. Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Pashke. Roll call vote, please.
Marx?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Malandra?
Aye.
We will adjourn to closed session. We will jump into closed session. There's no action being taken tonight. We kindly ask that the chamber be cleared respectfully. Microphones are off. No, that's good. I'm going to entertain a motion to return to open session.